That's right, baby.
Ms. Cook, you want me to sign all these documents in here? The historic designation.
I ain't bringing nothing.
Okay.
Just in case.
I'll sign them. If you don't need them signed, then you can shred them or whatever.
I can go home. What's wrong, Brett?
He's tired, it sounds like.
There's nothing controversial on the agenda tonight, so.
So you're trying to figure something?
I took my Adderall before I came back here. I'm good.
You're trying to find something?
Look at that wig. Looks like it just rolled out of the bed.
Hey, that's what's in style now, gentlemen. Two-thirds of our council don't even have any hair, so y'all really can't talk.
Oh.
Shots fired, boys. Shots fired.
I just shaved mine, you know.
You look like you went and got a haircut. I'm getting mine tomorrow.
I did last week. I'll get it.
Now you know what handsome look like, I'm telling you.
Huh?
Now he knows what handsome look like.
Yeah, that's what, hey, come on. Bald is in.
That's only, only men that can't grow hair say bald is in.
But see, everybody can't rock it.
Well, that's true. Everybody doesn't have a good head. That's true.
What's up, bro?
As long as I'm alive and I have a dollar in my pocket, there'll be hair on my head because I know I have a wonky-looking head. I can't have bald head.
You're hearing Rich. Imagine Brock with a bald head.
I said I was gonna ask you.
Yeah. Eddie can share with you if you start to lose.
He can comb it back this way.
Is it removed?
It'd be hanging down like Cousin Ed or whatever.
Brock, I'm interested. I wanna get one of those Halloween things and see how you look with a bald head.
No, that would look bad, dude. That would look bad. That'd be like putting hair on your head.
Hey, I'll look good either way.
Tell nobody, bro.
See that?
Suffer to be beautiful. This meeting went downhill real quick.
Got real personal.
I love you if you're bald. It's okay. It's okay.
I'm glad to know that. That's it. What? Now it's gonna be a trouble.
I don't know why right now I wanna talk about it because y'all always talk about it before I get my chance.
I'm gonna leave it to you, though. What's up, Philly? No, man. Donna tells me she was like, "He's a crazy guy." But he's funny. That's all I told her. I supposed to copy a smoothie recipe she designed into food, so I'm all off, way off.
Dave, you got us on? Okay, thank you. Our call to order, the Blythewood Town Council Special Call Meeting, Tuesday 13th of October 2020. Time is now 7:00 PM. We'll now move to item number one on the agenda for the roll call. Ms. Cowan, please call the roll. Here.
President.
You. President.
President.
Thank you. Ms. Cowan, for the good of the group, was the notification and posting of the meeting agenda completed in accordance with state law? Thank you. Gentlemen, before you, it's tonight's agenda, and I'll be looking for a motion to approve the agenda if you're satisfied. Motion.
Second.
It's been probably moved and seconded to approve tonight's agenda. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All oppose? The ayes have it. The agenda's approved. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in the pledge of allegiance and an invocation. The flag is to the rear. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite. Please join me in prayer. Your heavenly Father, ultimate source of light and strength, please bless this body as we conduct the business of the life we serve. Lord, we ask that you be with those who could not be here, those dealing with disease, stress, other dramas in their life. If you put a healing hand on our family members, our council member who will undergo a procedure, so please give him healing powers and strength. Lord, we ask that you be with all veterans, service members, and first responders as they continue to assist humanity in their dangerous and now even more dangerous profession with COVID crisis. Lord, we ask your divine wisdom tonight that you give us traveling graces home. We ask all these things in your Son's name, Jesus Christ, our holy Father. Please be seated. Thank you. We'll now begin with a council member remarks, and we'll start on the, my right, your left, Councilman Sloane Griffin.
Let's come to me first. Good afternoon, everyone, present and online. Thank you for joining us tonight. I promised to be real short. I do wanna send a special happy birthday out. First birthday to my son Tristan for this Thursday, so he turns one. And I finally got him to start clapping before I came, that's why I left the bag. But good to see each and every one of you. Glad you all are healthy and will be, keep my senior over there in his, in my prayers in the coming days. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's all.
Councilman Donald Brock.
Thanks, everyone. Good evening. Welcome to our special call meeting. To Councilman Sloane Griffin, congratulations. You survived the first year. That's good. Been there, done that twice. I wanna give a birthday shout-out to my daughter, who turns eight on Friday. So, happy birthday, Elizabeth. One other announcement. Happy to say that Sloane and I were very fortunate on October the first to attend a Pure Power Technologies tour with Governor Henry McMaster. Very nice facility, very nice people. Look forward to going back over there to... To, we talked with them about possibly having the council over to do a tour and see what they do. In my ignorance, I thought they did electric vehicles, and apparently they do turbos and fuel injectors for diesel vehicles, so it was really cool. Very clean manufacturing facility. And, yeah, Larry, you'll get some of my prayers too, buddy. And that's all I have to say. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
After our last meeting, we talked about having some traffic safety around town. I noticed that Richmond County has put some of the little mobile trailers around and clock the speed, so it's a good thing. They'll be able to get a recording of how fast people are driving down our road. So at least we're moving on, but we keep talking about some places. Everybody mark your calendars. Of course, you know Saturday is Oktoberfest here in Park. Ten, a lot of good bands playing, a lot of good activity. Anybody who doesn't wanna get that close to people, they'd like to go to another, like, BMW at Lake Waterbury.
Car show that day.
Four categories, different cars all the way to Rat Rod, so it sounds like they're gonna have a good time. Commander out there, they've got a car club out of Rock Hill bringing forty B vehicles. They have a lot of stuff going on out there. They've got a lot of stuff coming up. I'll announce later. They always do that. Few things coming up later on in the fall, so. Not too early to think about Reefs Across America out at the National Cemetery. Have an opportunity to sponsor Reefs in honor of somebody if you want to. Go to their website, Reefs Across America, Reefs for fifteen dollars. Sponsor one, they'll lay it out there in their honor.
Okay, sir, just one question. The time on the car show, if someone wants to do both Oktoberfest and the car show? Okay. That's all right. So it's, they start at ten?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Councilman Larry.
Mr. Mayor. I wanna thank everybody for coming out tonight. This, big crowd, big crowd. Worried must've didn't get out. I wanna, first of all, I think all of us got information that Queens' basketball tournament has been canceled. So that's been canceled. And, Mr. Mayor, I'm sure that you're gonna talk about the Historical Society introduction, so I'll leave that alone. And the last thing I gotta say is that I talked to Wes at District, and he told me that they're going to, on the Bethel High School, they're going to have a opening, a grand opening sometime. Their schedule is gonna be pretty much as they said before. But he also said that if the town or anybody had any contractors that wanted to participate in the building of the school, that he gave me a number for, I can, that they can call him, or call them, the architect, and, and see if they can get any work into the building of the school. Now, I asked him about it. He said that they're, and you might already talked to him about this. He said that they're real interested in getting people from the community to participate in the construction of the school. So, I don't know exactly what they're talking about, what kind of construction they're talking about, but it's not gonna hurt if you know anybody to pass it on to them. So, and I'll give you the number so that they can call the gentleman. That's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, guys, for your prayers.
Thank you. We'll move to the mayor's remarks, and I'll be brief. Councilman Griffin was correct. The Historical Society dedicated the new wing of their museum on the Fourth of October. I was privileged to go out and say a few words, but if you haven't had an opportunity to do that, to go by and see that with your family, please do. Very interesting. They also have a Native American exhibit, which will be starting, I believe it's this week, in Cary for three to four weeks. So, take your family by there after church one afternoon. I mean, you know, make sure they're open and everything, and the facilities are prepared for you, but it's very, very educational to go by there. Learned a lot last time. Oktoberfest, we've talked about it, seventeenth, from ten to ten. Please come out and participate. And then if you have time, swing by there and then leave and go by the VFW and see the car show. So it's always good to hear these things. We're gonna talk about Veterans Day tree lighting and parade, so I'll hold that until we get to it on the agenda. And also, remember, we vote on November third, so please get your family, friends, and neighbors out to go out and vote, exercise the civic duty. And we don't get to do it often, and we're the few countries in the world that are free to choose our elected officials. So please encourage people to go out and vote. With that, we will move now to the approval of the minutes. And before you, counsel, we have the town council meeting, minutes from the twenty-eighth of September. And I'll be looking for a motion to approve if it meets your approval.
Make a motion?
Twenty-eighth of September. Sorry, go ahead.
Make a motion to approve as is.
Okay. It's been probably motion and seconded to approve the minutes from the twentieth of September as written. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All oppose? The ayes have it. The minutes are approved. Thank you, gentlemen. We now move to part two, tonight's monthly meeting, the discussion item, and we'll begin with Veterans Day. I guess I'll speak about it to start with. This year, the Blythewood Historical Society Museum, who hosts our annual Veterans Day observ-, well, what's it called? Observance or Ceremony, is elected to do it on the eighth of November, which is on Sunday, from 2:00 PM until it's complete, which will probably be 4:00 to 5:00 PM. This year, we're moving it to the amphitheater out here because the turnout has been so great in the last two years that it's just hard to find parking and folks to get in there and pay their respects and observe our celebration of veterans, that we decided to do it in the open park this year. So this year, we'll have some speeches, regalia, hopefully have an army band, a color guard, and then we'll ask, and we'll also have a car show, both historic vintage military vehicles and possibly Mustangs and other older vehicles. And then we will proceed with a march, a veterans' parade, all the way around the Alvinah Haygood Loop. That is the concept of operation for this year. Hope you will turn out, and I just wanted to discuss that with council members. Any comments, council members, about Veterans Day this year? I believe we funded $2,000 to the Blythewood Historical Society Museum, which was the same amount last year, and they always do a great job. And that's primarily for advertising, getting the word out to our veterans, and getting the folks here that need to be here to observe. Any comments?
Will CDC guidelines be in place?
Absolutely. Good question. There will be the same social distance requirements that we have done in the past here in the amphitheater. Chairs for elderly veterans will be spaced apart, and we will have that social distance there. And then when we commence the parade, individuals can move forward up the hill to Alvinah Haygood Circle, and then, of course, stay with your family. There'll be separation with other families and so on. Plenty of space. I forgot to mention, in the Farmer's Market Field, directly adjacent to the amphitheater seating area, we will have information tables with nonprofit organizations who assist and promote veterans organizations. Will be there to give out information to veterans who may or may not have been exposed to those organizations and the services they offer, and some of the things that veterans need to be reminded of from time to time. That there are benefits out there for our veterans, and we wanna make it, make them aware as often as we can to, to partake in those benefits. It'll be a full day, three hours, three to four hours. I know we talked in the past, and I'll just say this for the record, about trying to do fireworks and some other things, but with the social distancing requirements, the traffic requirements, it was just a bridge too far to do it this year. So we still owe you a time in Blythewood for when we're gonna, gonna have our fireworks. Right now, they're in Councilmember Baumann's garage, so they're safe and... But we do need to schedule that, and we wanna be as safe and responsible as possible. We just couldn't make it happen right now. So, any other comments about Veterans Day? Then we'll move to part B, the tree lighting and Christmas parade annually. The first Sunday in December is our tree lighting, and then the second Sunday in December is our annual Christmas parade. For the tree lighting this year, normally we do it out front of Hoffman House, and people are, sit tightly in chairs, obviously, with the social distancing requirements and safety concerns. We wanna spread that out. We might have seating spaced out on the Farmer's Market Field, looking back at the Christmas tree, as opposed to in the immediate area of the Hoffman House. We're still working the technique or how we're gonna do it this year. Definitely has to be different from last year because we're too close, and we won't meet the social distance guidelines. And we may just have people free-for-all all around it, as long as you're more than six feet apart. You could set your chairs up anywhere in the park so you can observe the trees when they are lit. And we'll, of course, have a sound system there where everyone can hear us. And one thing I forgot to mention about Veterans Day also is that we now video all these events that the town sponsors. And so if people don't feel safe to come out into public due to COVID-19, or they don't wanna risk unnecessarily exposing themselves for health concerns or whatever other reason, we do video these events, post them to our YouTube site, so people can then watch them as soon as they're over. So, don't feel obligated to come out to participate. If you don't feel safe, after the event's over, it'll be published and it'll be posted, and you can watch it in the comfort and safety of your own home. So, any questions about tree lighting, gentlemen? Christmas parade, we've had quite a few discussions with the Christmas parade, as you all know. The Transfiguration Catholic Church usually sponsors and hosts the Christmas parade on behalf of the town. The Knights of Columbus specifically is an organization within the church, and they had a meeting recently. I asked them, do not feel obligated, if you do not feel comfortable hosting the Christmas parade. They're gonna let me know. Haven't had official word as of today, but they did meet. If they don't feel safe doing that, or don't wanna take that responsibility on, then the town staff will do it. It won't be, as I tell everybody, it won't be as flashy or as sexy as when the church does it, but we will do our best and do a parade, and then in order to accommodate social distancing guidelines, we'll start here in the park. Go across, go out the McClain Road Gate down here, turn left, and then do our route as best we can. So, yes, we do have to cross the train track, but we're gonna make sure we have the train scheduled. We'll make sure the police are on standby, as safe as possible, so that now not only do families line the normal route, and y'all know how crowded that gets, but they will also be able to spread out the entire park here in Alvinah Haygood Loop. And so we, what we're doing is effectively doubling the length of the route, and all participants will be told this ahead of time. So if you have young marchers and things, they will understand it's twice as long as it was last year. And that's so that families can take a spot together, six feet, other families, six feet, other families. Everyone will be accommodated. There'll be no candy. There'll be no touching. There'll be no dress-up in a Scooby-Doo outfit and go shake hands with kids. That, those things would violate the COVID-19 social distance rules, and we'll make sure we do it safely. And again, it will be filmed, so if folks wanna stay home and then watch the parade at their leisure in their own home, they'll be able to do that. So we're trying to be as normal as possible here in Blythewood and continue the traditions that the citizens love and enjoy, but we wanna be as safe as possible. Now, having said that, if we only had ten to fifteen entrants, I would still love to do a parade, but that's just not logical. You don't get the same bang for your buck. So it depends on how many registrants are gonna come forward and say they wanna put their float in the parade. If that makes sense to this council, then we'll vote on it to go forward or to postpone it. And of course, my first default, if we postpone, would be to possibly an Easter parade. Give us another ninety to a hundred-day buffer between Christmas to see how the COVID-19 disease is tracking, is it improving, is it safer? I wouldn't wanna schedule it just a month later and have to cancel, a month later cancel. Just go ahead and do it ninety to a hundred days out to Easter possibly, and do our parade then if we have to. But if all systems are go, the Department of Commerce gives us a waiver, we have enough entrance to get the bang for the buck, so to speak, we're gonna do the parade on time the second Sunday in December and lengthen our route by two. Any comments, council members?
What's the cutoff date for entrance, so that that'll be our B-day?
Great question. Good discussion. As soon as the Knights of Columbus tells me yea or nay, then we'll immediately get together and we'll discuss. What they've also said, though, of course, they're absolutely accommodating. They understand, we understand their position if they decide not to host it. But they will immediately give us all their email addresses, the phone numbers of all the past participants who have registered publicly on their site, and then we'll reach out to them and we'll get an idea of, you know, how accommodating we can be and how many floats we're gonna have, and then we'll make a decision based on that. But as soon as possible. Good point. But we have to let people know now so they can make plans and they get their floats ready and make sure they understand they're crossing a train track twice. So they don't have a low float that will ground out on the train tracks. It's high enough to make the transition over. Other questions? Hearing none, we'll move to tonight's action items. And then citizen testimony regarding action items as required. So just signify to me if you wanna speak at any time, open citizen comment while we read these. We'll begin with the second reading of ordinance 2020 dot zero one four, Bethel Hambury, an amendment to rezone portion of parcel, Bethel Hambury Gymnasium to denote a Class One property historic designation in town center zoning. Address is 125 Bonny Road, TMS number 15200 dash zero two dash two four P. Ms. Cook? Councilmembers, any comments or concerns?
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been probably moved and seconded to approve the designation of Class One property historic designation for the Bethel Hambury Gymnasium. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All oppose? The ayes have it. The motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. We now move to item B, under action items for tonight's meeting, ordinance 2020 dot zero one five, state of emergency ordinance. Gentlemen, any comments?
Make a motion to approve.
It's been probably moved and seconded to approve ordinance 2020 dot zero one five, state of emergency. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All oppose? The ayes have it. Motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen. Move to part C tonight, ordinance 2020 dot zero one six, mask ordinance. Comments or concerns, gentlemen?
I was going... So, Sarah Lynn, if you don't mind, pull up the Lincoln Sun Art GIS. The other one. So if you look at this map, this is the data that we push to the SEOC. So the state keeps up with every municipality in every county with a active mask ordinance. You can see around you there twelve counties that still currently have a county-wide outside of the municipalities in those counties. Currently have sixty-four municipalities in the state with some sort of mask ordinance. Sarah Lynn, you can zoom in on those, on that map? So you can see some counties that doesn't have a county-wide, but municipality might, like Florence, the city of Florence has one, but the county doesn't, and there's other municipalities there. If you click on Blythewood, you can hover over and click on, you zoom in, zoom in on the map, Sarah Lynn. Yeah, you can, if you click on Blythewood, I just wanna show the council that, you know, would it state, so that's how active. And I don't tell them, I didn't tell them we have one. So they have a group that's digging and pulling information, but that's how it shows. If you click on like, like, click anywhere near Ridgeway, and it says suggested use. So, it's not saying they, you know, they don't have one, but they suggest to their constituents to use a mask to be safe. So, if you look at the trend in Richland County... So, um, if you look at the trend in Richland County, um, every municipality in Richland County has some sort of mask ordinance. Um, I would like for us, um, that the council to stay in line with that. I think that offers a lot more protection and buffers if we stand in line with everyone around us in our perspective county.
Thank you, good feedback. So, what we're saying is there are twelve of forty-six counties, roughly twenty-five percent have them, and sixty-four of, and I believe we had two hundred and twenty-seven municipalities out there, roughly?
Yes, sir, something like that.
So, only twenty to twenty-five percent have an active mask ordinance, as opposed to suggested.
Yes, sir.
So, what be the pleasure of the council?
You look at the current DEHEC data, if you pull up the other link I sent, I mean, if you stroll down to the map, um, DEHEC on this site, on the public site, is keeping up with a two-week, um, data, so those numbers are combined for two weeks, um, on that map there. It's small. Um, but you can see the counties around us, I'll just tell you, those counties around us are at a higher rate of COVID within that two-week, um, cumulative number. Um, and we're sitting somewhere in the moderate, um, as far as Richland County, so, surrounding us, uh, mine is Kershaw County that is moderate also, but everybody else around us is considered high, um, cases right now. Although we do see a trend of cases going down, um, there's still active cases and pockets of cases out there in areas that will be higher than normal, um, especially with tourism and things of that sort going on, and folks are starting to get back out. And then there's some relaxed policy, as far as like the restaurants now, um, can, you know, use their max seating, um, and that's up to the restaurant owners to do so, so. However, we want to follow it, council, but, you know, my recommendation would be to stay suit, see what the trend is in the next cycle. Um, I believe this expires on, what, sixty? Is it sixty days or sixty-nine?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. Comments, council members?
Mr. Mayor, um, based on what's been said, then, with following not only the state news but the national news, uh, one of the things that they're talking about is that flu, uh, flu season coming in, it's gonna get cold, and it's gonna be difficult to determine whether or not a person has COVID or the flu, because the symptoms seem to be the same. Uh, so I want to make sure that we keep that in mind, too, the flu season coming in and we're still gonna be spreading stuff, so hopefully, everything will work out.
That's a good point, though. Masks could help with the flu also.
And that's, that's part of it, as far as keeping it in place, is the unknown right now in that case of it. Um, although DEHEC, um, and, and you can get your flu shots, I do want to make that known, you can go out and get flu shots right now, and those are highly available. Um, there are a couple of drive-through clinics, um, that's going on also to get it, um, statewide. Testing is still available for COVID. Um, you can get your test results back in a day, um, at best. I got mine's back, took two days.
And we got the fifteen-minute test?
We been had the fifteen-minute test, sir.
So?
Hospitals have those fifteen-minute tests.
I mean, not outside of hospital, I don't need to go in.
There you go.
Okay.
I was, uh, they're charging for those fifteen minutes. There's not covered on the insurance, um, but as far as state provided or federal provided assets, those, um, testing devices went to hospitals. Yep. Those hospital systems been had them for quite some time now, and those are, are really used for patients coming in the ER, if you spike in temperature, or that they just want to check. Um, and I believe that's what they're doing with most patients that are inpatients. You know, if I went in for a procedure, um, there, most hospitals are testing you, uh, just to be on the safe side, so.
Mr. Mayor, it seems that the pros outweigh the cons in this instance, and so I'll make a recommendation to approve ordinance twenty twenty spot zero one six.
Second. It's been probably motioned and seconded to approve ordinance twenty twenty dot zero one six, Mask Ordinance. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All oppose? The ayes have it? And, uh, well, as a comment, since we're talking about it, Westwood High School had free flu shots for Riston School District two children today. I didn't get the note till right after lunchtime, but I think it was like two to six PM. So, go to the DEHEC websites, see where they're giving these flu shots out, and please get your, get your folks, get your parents. Go ahead. Thank you. It is that time. We've already, go get it done. Open citizen comments, item four tonight. Do we hear any open citizen comments? Hearing none, we'll move to part five, executive session. In accordance with state law thirty dash four dash seven zero Alpha One, Discussion of Employment, Appointment, Compensation, Promotion, Demotion, Discipline, or Release of an Employee, a Student, or Person Regulated, Regulated by a Public Body, or the Appointment of a Person to a Public Body, in this case, the Town Attorney of Blythewood. There'll be no decisions made, and we will not reconvene in this forum after tonight's executive session. We'll have a motion to go into executive.
Second.
It's been probably motioned and seconded to go into executive session. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All oppose? The motion passes. Five-minute recess.
Mr. Mayor, are we doing a?
Go ahead.
Are, are we doing a regular meeting this month, or this isn't placed?
This, this, in place.